I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on nation, on God, in the temple of the liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Before we start our favorite portion of our meeting this evening, which is our Students of the Month, I did want to announce that, I don't know how many of you voted, or hopefully all of you voted, and you saw that we had seven people, really great people, running for a school board. Fortunately for us, three of our members who ran were re-elected, Beth and Mike and Nancy, and we're really happy about that. And our fourth person who was elected to the board is Tammy Story, who's in the audience tonight. Tammy, would you stand up so everybody could see you?
Hey, this is Probst from Hornet Park. I'll start.
We are really into our TAP second cluster cycle, and we're supporting the six-plus-one trait writing initiative that we as a district adopted a few years ago, and so we are really driving home the importance of writing. Today, we talked about the trade of ideas, and we're moving on next week. Last week, if you're a Hornet Park student, you know, or you're a family member of Hornet Park student, but we had a feast of fun last week. We had grandparents night on Monday night. We did cookies and cuddles, a scavenger hunt, a book fair, and a video presentation, a special musical presentation, put together by our music teacher Natalie Etter and Ellen Collinsworth, our technology integration specialist. It was a really fun evening. Also, last week, Central and Hornet Park had a skating party, a great turnout. And then finally, on Thursday, we took a school-wide field trip to the children's museum. Students, parents, and staff, a total of almost 600 people, traveled safely to and from the children's museum. And it's been interesting to see students selecting certain books, kind of springboarding from things they studied. Also, writing projects I've seen spring up all over the building, and so those opportunities are wonderful things to extend to our students. I just want to announce something coming up soon. You know, after Thanksgiving, we all enjoy a little football, and we have a literacy night that is all football-themed out. Coming up soon, it is on Thursday, November 29, from 6 to 7 in the evening. At that event, we'll have some door prizes and snacks, but more importantly, some easy ways that you can work with your child at home with the five different areas of literacy. So I hope to see you then. All right, well, this Thanksgiving season, and we have a lot for which we're thankful, but that which is pretty high on our list this evening is the Hornet Park Student of the Month. So I would like to take a moment to share with you about Ms. Malone Moore. Malone, will you come up? All right, I have some wonderful things for teachers of that to say about her. From Ms. Weishaupt, Malone is always a good listener in class. She's a leader, and I feel like many of her classmates look to her to see what to do. She's always following directions, and because of this, she excels at whatever we're working on in class. Mrs. Osborne says she's very responsible and that she's self-motivated. She's a wonderful part of Hornet Park. Mrs. Sutton says, "I just love Malone. She's always there to brighten my day. She's polite to me and to others. She's willing to jump right in and try new things, and she's just an all-around neat kid." She's not only super talented, that's my favorite part, but so full of imagination and spunk that she makes being a teacher such a great job. And for Mrs. Kleeman, finally, Malone is an excellent role model in my classroom. She's respected by all the others, and she continues to excel in all areas. She's a friend to all. And our special friend from Hornet Park, Student of the Month, Malone Moore.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to highlight a couple of things quickly that are going on at Central. We just completed a very successful Red Ribbon Week. I always have to be careful with that. That's a hard one to say it fast five times. Mrs. Wolf, our school counselor, did an excellent job of having activities and information for the students on why taking drugs is a bad idea. Each day had a theme, and the week was focused on the students really planning about their future. The Wednesday afternoon of last week, the students enjoyed many guest speakers, and they learned about many different types of jobs. Mrs. Prindle came, we had a piano tuner, police officers, firemen, just a really wide variety of careers for the kids to listen to. Over 50 posters were submitted for the poster contest, and here are the third-place winners, Mimi Olson and Jesse Walls. The second-place winners were Erica Settles and Taylor Kelly, and the first-place winners were Mackenzie Seifer and Carissa Guardiola. And those posters are displayed in the front hallway at school. The students and staff appreciate the time, effort, and energy that Mrs. Wolf put into the week's activities. It's a really big week for her. She also coordinated the food drive for Servants' Heart, and I'm pleased to announce that we collected over 1,400 items this year to donate to Servants' Heart, which is just incredible. To kind of piggyback on Mrs. Probst's, our literacy night is this Thursday. Our book harvest is this Thursday from 5 to 7, which is November the 15th. The students and their families can enjoy guest speakers. A couple of the board members and Dr. Hammack will be reading on Thursday evening, some literacy activities, and a snack. We also will have this classic book fair set up, and this year, the book fair is only two days, Thursday and Friday, so if you want to shop, you need to make sure you come in on Thursday evening. It's a terrific opportunity for families to enjoy their time together and maybe learn something in the time as well. These teachers have helped to really put it together. Mrs. Harris, Mrs. McGowan, Mrs. Dode, Mrs. Taub, Mrs. LaFavers, Ms. Cotter, and Mr. Hubbell all have worked to plan and organize the event, and we hope to see lots of people there on Thursday evening. So those are something last week and something upcoming. Now's the best part. I'm going to introduce Andrew Bailey, and Andrew's going to come over. He is our October Student of the Month. I'm going to read some really nice things. Mrs. Smith, Andrew's teacher, is here in the audience, so some of these things she was able to share with us as well. Andrew is a third grader in Mrs. Smith's class. She says, "Andrew is a role model student. He always has a smile on his face and comes ready to learn. In class, he is a focused listener and always strives to do his personal best. He participates in class discussions and knows how to explain his thinking, especially in math. He wants to do well, and you can tell that school is important to him. Andrew works hard at school and has a very bright future." Mrs. Weishaupt, our polytechnology teacher, states that Andrew has grown as a student this year. He has become a much better listener, and it shows in his work. She says, "Great job." Mrs. Etter, our music teacher, describes Andrew as quiet and attentive, a student who gets his work done and doesn't cause disruption. Disruptions. He always tries to make the best of any circumstance and does a terrific job in class. Finally, Mrs. Sutton, our teacher, shares that Andrew is a good student. He always has a positive attitude and a smile to share. He constantly practices wonderful manners and lends helpful hand to his peers. It is my pleasure to recognize Andrew Bailey as our October Student of the Month.
Mrs. Reed, South Grove Intermediate School.
Good evening. I'm Tanya Reed, principal at South Grove. Couple things going on at South Grove. Last week, we decided to extend Breast Cancer Awareness Month into November. The students and staff wore pink each and every day, and we collected coin donations that will go to breast cancer research. We did this to honor one of our students whose mother passed away last November of breast cancer. His family was behind this endeavor, and we joined in happily and were happy to honor her memory with him. So on Friday of last week, the students' class did a balloon launch of 30 pink and white balloons, all with special messages inside written by his classmates, and it was kind of a touching way to end the week as we watched those balloons float off into the heavens. So, very nice for us last week. And like I said, all the money's going to go to breast cancer research. We haven't gotten a total yet, so I'll let you know as soon as we have that. This week, the weeks leading up to the election, students were learning all about the democratic process we use in America to elect our government officials, and in order to be in compliance with the state law that requires sixth-grade students to have election education, our sixth-grade teachers grabbed a hold of that. On Friday, November 2, the sixth-grade students rotated through stations and did activities in the following areas: Democracy in America, Methods of Voting, Political Party Structures and Campaigns, Election Laws, and the Responsibility of Citizenship in Government and Elections. So the whole hallway, sixth-grade hallway, was decked out in red, white, and blue, including the students and the teachers. And I think there are pictures on the website that you can see of that. So, and then on Tuesday, Election Day, all the South Grove students participated in the presidential election by casting their vote electronically, and Barack Obama won at South Grove. So it was a wonderful learning opportunity for all. I wanted to congratulate the sixth-grade girls' basketball team on their victory over Martinsville last evening, 22 to 20. Here, it was a very scrappy game. The girls play again this Thursday at home, beginning at 5:30, and the girls' team is coached by Kate and Shu. The sixth-grade boys' basketball season opens this Wednesday, November 14, at Mount Vernon. The boys are coached by Larry Williams, and of course, we wish them the best of luck at the start of their season. And I'll be able to report as the season goes on how they're doing. But tonight, I would like to honor Jennifer Densford. I should say, the South Grove staff and I would like to honor Jennifer Densford. She's cute. Jennifer is South Grove Student of the Month. She is a sixth grader and is the daughter of Jill Densford. Mrs. Piper, her teacher, says that Jennifer is an enthusiastic learner who enjoys school and strives to do her very best at everything she does. She consistently conducts herself with maturity and is honest and trustworthy when dealing with others. Since Jennifer tackles classroom assignments, tasks, and group work in an organized manner, she is committed to doing her very best. Mrs. Camparado, you can imagine what she says. She says, "Love her. Phenomenal student. Very intelligent. Silent leader. Extremely creative. Very driven. Sweet, sweet, sweet to all of her peers and teachers. Huge heart for everyone. Very helpful and will be very successful in whatever she chooses to do in life." And I've had the opportunity to watch Jennifer grow and learn at South Grove over the last three years. She is an outstanding student and person, and I'm very proud to be able to give this honor to her tonight and go to the middle school next year and show them what you got. Congratulations, Jennifer.
Good evening. Like the Central and South Grove, we recently celebrated a special week. I want to thank Mrs. Op for her efforts in Red Ribbon Week for Beach Grove Middle School. Tonight, our seventh and eighth-grade boys' basketball season opens against St. Jude. And do we know how we did? We don't know how we did. Well, I'll get to Dylan in a second. On Thursday of this week, we have our second home game, and that is a home game against, and I can't remember who it's against right now, but the important part of that is that we have our sports jam, and that's an after-school dance, and students that attend that can pay $2 to get in or bring two canned good items, and part of their admission is free admission to the game. So we usually have a pretty good student section for our opening, or our second home basketball game. Last year, we had 150 students attend that and had 300 canned food items that we gave to Servants' Heart, and we're hoping to exceed both of those numbers next year. I want to congratulate our marching Hornets on their finish at State this year. That is significant to Beach Grove Middle School because we had 19 middle school students that marched with the Hornets. Also, as you know, that literacy is a focus of our corporation, and we are driving our Common Core standards through our Connections Board, and our staff's doing a wonderful job of that. We've also started to track our usage of the media center, and in September, we had 688 students that went through the media center, and in October, which, remember, we had the two weeks off, we had 722 students go through. So we're hoping that trajectory continues and our students visit the media center often. Our TAP goal this year, and the high school's goal is the same, is a strategy called R-7-8-P. R is Read and Restate. Seven are the seven methods to do that. It's a problem-solving strategy, by the way. And those methods can be anything from draw a diagram, create a table, find a pattern. A stands for Answer, and P stands for Prove, so you need to prove your answer. Finally, on Thursday, the 28th, we are having our Smart Start to Practice, and those are students that are nominated by staff that have had a positive impact on Beach Grove Middle School. But now, for our Student of the Month, so Dylan Light, if you want to come on up. Dylan, we had to flip-flop, so this is actually a month old. Dylan was playing football during the October meeting, and just moments ago, Dylan was playing basketball. So that's why we don't know the outcome of the seventh-grade game. Team Einstein nominates Dylan Light as its Student of the Month. Over the past six weeks, Dylan has had a positive influence on so many PGMS teachers and students with his positive efforts, kindness, and dedication to his academic work. Every day, Dylan enters the classroom with a positive attitude and willingness to work that only elevates the others around him. Dylan pays careful attention in class and seeks help, not only when he needs help, but will be the first to help another student who is struggling. Being a student athlete, Dylan excels in time management and finding balance between school and sports. He is an awesome role model to all of his peers, and the Einstein teachers are very fortunate to have him on their team. It is a great pleasure, it is with great pleasure, that Team Einstein nominates Dylan Light as its Student of the Month.
Good evening. I want to take a moment to talk about C9 and what's going on with C9 Beach Grove High School. We'd like to celebrate a couple of our students who were selected as their November Student of the Month. Jordan Hook was selected in Culinary Arts, and Chef Lopez says Jordan is a walking definition of punctuality and dependability. He understands the role of a kitchen manager, and he exemplifies that to his teammates on the team down there. Dustin Harper, another one of the Beach Grove students, was selected as a Fire Science Student of the Month down there. And Dustin has come on very strong this year at C9 in Fire Science. As a matter of fact, he was one of the few students, I'd take it, that went to C9 during our winter break, our fall break, and he did all the work that was expected to him down there, and Mr. Brooks selected him as a Student of the Month. Kathy Lo, who is our homeschool advisor, set up all our freshman teams, both houses to go down to C9 on a field trip this week to see what programs they have down there and hopefully help them with their pathways as they move into their sophomore, junior, and senior year. Celebrations of success, we had a couple weeks ago on a Friday at Beach Grove High School to celebrate all the fall activities that were going on. We have an annual pyramid building contest, and the Boys Cross Country team won that that day. But we celebrated a lot of things. One is all the co-curricular activities, meaning the band who played at the state finals and were, as Tom said, fifth in Class C competition. They put in a tremendous amount of time. And then also, all the extracurricular activities, which are the sports that are going on, as well as the club activities. We have about 39% of our student body right now is involved in some type of activity that's outside of school, and we think that's very, a very good, but we wanted to get 100% by the spring, so we're very happy with that. And as I said, the marching band just did a tremendous job, and we're very excited about their success, and they'll start right back up and get ready for next year. Our Swarm, which Mr. Wyler Craft and Mark James are involved in, they took our Swarm group, which is our TV studio, out on Election Day and filmed the election all over Indianapolis, and they were even in Channel 6 doing interviews. That's on YouTube, and it's also on Channel 28 if you'd like to see what they did. We're very proud of those students. And then obviously, the Science Academy opening tonight was a big event for Beach Grove High School and Beach Grove City Schools. Also, Hornet Richmond Academy. We have an update. I just want to read what Kelly told me to share with you. The Hornet Richmond Academy students are actively pursuing many real-life learning opportunities as part of their developing project-based curriculum that we have. Tomorrow, our students are going to welcome many of the district and community members to a celebration of world culture as a cuisine day around the world with Soup Day. The students have planned all that out. They've shopped for the ingredients, and they're preparing the soups that'll go from all the way around the world as part of the Family Consumer Science class we have there. Many things goes to Mrs. Harkel Road, who's the VAX teacher, for planning this activity. In addition, the students are continuing to work with Servants' Heart, as well as the High School Student Council, to bring in canned foods for Thanksgiving, and that will be doing all the way up until the holiday season. Also, at HEA, we're going to welcome all the students, family, and committee members, anybody that wants to come, to an open house in a graduation celebration, which will be on November 27. The open house will take place from 5:30 to 7, and the graduation will be at 7 o'clock with the students that fulfill their requirements down there. And so that gives you, leads me to what I think's great, and that's introducing our Student of the Month. So Veronica coming up. Veronica Rubidoo is a senior. She's a class of 2013. She is 23rd in her class, and she has a GPA of 3.3. Activities that she's been involved in, she's been in 4H for five years. She's currently the president of her 4H club. She owns and shows horses, and I have horses. I have two horses. Forgot to tell you that. Veronica is currently president of the Beach Grove FFA and has been a member of our swim team for the last two seasons. Services experience that she's been involved in is working with Strides of Success. That's a therapeutic riding stable, and she also works with a youth group at her middle school at the church. It's the Vineyard Church. One of our faculty members wrote this, and that would be Mr. Kaufman, imagine that. He said, "Beyond having 100% in my animal science and introduction of agriculture, food, and natural resource classes, Veronica is showing herself to be quite a student leader." For years, she's been driven to try to get FFA in agriculture at Beach Grove High School for several years. And now that it's here, she jumped in headfirst. She was elected as the first president of her FFA, and she's already begun scheduling events and creating events for this school year. She continually recruits new members to her FFA with her winning personality and her genuine congeniality. She makes the job of the program easier for him. He coordinates things, but her assistance has made it easy for Mr. Kaufman. Her future plans are to attend Ivy Tech Columbus and then go to Purdue University with the intention to major in agriculture education, and someday, she hopes to be an ag extension and a worker upon earning her bachelor's degree. So I thank you, Veronica.
Clearly, they saved the oldest for last here tonight to make the presentation. On behalf of Mrs. Skiller, I'm Wendell Crook, and I will talk about our first Student of the Month down at the academy, and she told me I clearly had five minutes, and that's all. So I'll try not to take too much time, but I do like to talk about Beach Grove. We have a lot of firsts down there at the academy, being brand-new. Everything that we do is a first. We've had our first credit earned. We've had all kinds of firsts, and we have our first Student of the Month for the HEA. And I want to bring him up here. Jacob, if you would come up here. Jacob Locke. And I would rather talk, but I'm going to read this because that's what I am supposed to do, but I really like to talk about him. He's a great kid. Jacob exemplifies a successful student at the HEA, and we are proud to recognize him this month as our Student of the Month. Jacob models a strong work ethic, both in service and academics, as evidenced by the progress he has made at the HEA and at Central 9. Jacob models service leadership through his enthusiasm to work with Servants' Heart and his efforts during HEA during the workdays. Jacob is a leader among his peers, displaying a positive spirit and a can-do attitude every day. Mrs. Condon stated that Jacob is always willing to volunteer, no matter how big or small the job is, and he demonstrates a spirit of helpfulness to both staff and students, and I would certainly echo that. Mr. Lance comments that Jacob, for his effort, and commends Jacob for his efforts in the U.S. History Meeting Project deadlines and maintaining a good attitude. His personal growth is evident by the progress he has made this semester. So on behalf of Mrs. Skiller and the entire staff at the Hornet in Richmond Academy, first of all, I want to congratulate Mom and Grandmothers. Always very successful people behind kids like this. The very first Student of the Month for the HEA, Jacob Locke.
Okay, we're going to change up the agenda, the order of the agenda this evening. We're going to start with Mr. Bailey on the operations update.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and take the operations update because earlier, a couple of board meetings in a row continue to update you on food service. And so tonight, I did think that, you know, we had moved through kind of a quarter of the year, and we had some data that we could share. As you know, back in May, we started a venture toward having a food service provider. We did a RFP, which is a proposal, and looked at a lot of different vendors and determined that Chartwell's was the appropriate way to go. And I wanted to bring some data and bring some people and introduce you so that you weren't just listening from the business guy, just on the dollars and cents, but actually the personal piece of food service. So I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Justin Hawkins, and he is the coordinator, district manager. Is that okay? District manager for Chartwell. And I also brought, he brought with him Kelly Deal, who is our food service director, and Beth Gervin, our very own, Assistant Food Service Director. And they're going to do a little presentation for you to tell you how the transition has gone so far. So without further ado.
Dr. Kaiser, numbers of the board. I cannot stand behind the podium. Any presentation that I give, if I stand behind the podium, I mess it all up, and so I hope that doesn't bother you if I walk around and talk to you. I just want to thank you for this opportunity for us to come present to you our first three months here at Beach Grove Schools. This has been, that's probably one of the easiest-opening school districts that I've had. I have 13 school districts that I operate in Indiana and Ohio and Beach Grove. It's been so easy, awesome. Employees are great. Everything about this school district has been, just been a breeze. So I wanted to start with some of the things that we have changed, some of the items that we've introduced to your school system. As of right now, all of your schools are running on a five-week cycle. And Kelly and Beth jump in at any time if I miss sleep. We now do made-order sandwiches at the high school. If you haven't been to the high school cafeteria yet, we set up a station out that's kind of like Subway where the kids can order a sandwich and have it made with all the toppings and meats and cheeses that they want. We now do fresh-made pizzas daily at the high school and middle school, and we make that there in your kitchen. We buy frozen dough, and we make those pizzas from scratch. And hopefully, at some point, we'll be able to get that into the elementary schools instead of, you know, those rectangle pizzas, although that's my favorite pizza. I love that pizza. We have that approved for the six-cent reimbursement. For those of you that know what that is, there's new regulations for the USDA with the new authorization of the school lunch program. If a school district can meet criteria, your school district will be, you'll be available to get an extra six cents per meal reimbursements from the federal government. We've gone through and done all that labor with the state. Kelly met with the coordinator from the state last week and, or the week before. Everything's all set. We will have an audit here coming up later in the year. So that's good news. We've updated some of your cash handling procedures. That's one of the first things that we always look at when we come into a school district. Cash needs to be tracked, and we need to make sure that it's going to the bank correctly, being taken care of. So we've made some changes there. So we've made some changes there. If you've been out in your buildings, I'm sure you see that all the food service employees are now in a uniform, black shirt, black hat, black pants, non-slip shoes for their safety, so that they don't fall and hurt themselves. That's something that's really important to us, because lunch ladies kinda, they tend to get a bad rap. Everybody remembers the lunch lady when you went to school, they had a mean old lunch lady, and if she yelled at you once, you never went back to that lunch line, at least I never did. So we try to keep our employees feeling like they're professional, they get paid to do a great service for the students. Most times, that's the best time of their day, when they get to socialize with their friends, and have a good nutritious meal. In the beginning, when we first started, we took all of the staff here at Beach Grove, and we trained them with our original chef Jennifer, and our marketing person Toby Schaefer. Beth even went through that training, wasn't that a blast, Beth?
Yes, it was.
And so we trained them at the high school, trained them all day, and they all said, "There's no way that we can do this." But by golly, they are, and they do an awesome job. We provide breakfast and lunch at the two buildings during intercession, but that's the first time that you guys have had intercession, so that's pretty awesome. Nutrition lessons in the classroom, which Kelly's gonna talk more about in the next couple slides, 'cause she did a couple, I think she's only done one so far?
One so far.
One so far. Nutrition lessons for the elementary students. We're going to be applying for the Healthier U.S. School Challenge Grant. There's three different levels for that grant, and it's tied to not only nutrition, but physical fitness, and there are three levels, gold, silver, and bronze, and are you gonna apply for silver?
I don't know yet.
Gold's pretty tough.
Yeah, gold's really tough.
Gold is tied to how much, how many minutes of physical activity that your students get in the building, and sometimes it's kinda hard to mess with the schedules in the buildings. And we've increased the choices at all levels, if you've been out to the high school and middle school, we've a lot more choices per day at all of your buildings. And then, Dr. Keely talked about some data. This is just our first three months' worth of data from all of your buildings. As you can see, breakfast last year, the green portion, you were serving about 789 breakfasts a day. This year, you're serving 888. Last year, 1,800 meals a day, this year 1,900 meals, this is across your entire corporation. And then your alacard dollars, that's just alacard cash, up a couple hundred dollars a day there as well. Our focus as a company is on meals. We wanna focus on a reimbursable meal that's balanced and nutritious. So we try not to focus on alacard, but because of some of the things that we had to change, your alacard has gone up a little bit. But that's not through like chips and beverages and stuff like that, that might be like an alacard sandwich that they are buying a second sandwich, or something like that. This is something that I always like to show, is your participation percentage. Your enrollment changes every year, so I can't just show you what your numbers, your meals that are served every day, I need to show you what your percentage is, because I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, you're up about 30 kids from last year? Somewhere, somewhere about that? So this is more of a telling number, you're up about 3% on breakfast, 4% on lunch, and that's in the first three months, and we hope to continue to grow that. This is where we're gonna have Kelly talk about her nutrition lessons.
So I was asked by Kelly Borgert at Hornet Park to come in on a Thursday, where they have all their students do relatable activities, I guess, in a classroom, and talk about nutrition. I did it in September, and we talked more about, since it's kindergarten and first grade, about what fruit and vegetables actually look like when they come out of the ground, you know? 'Cause sometimes the kids always see are the sliced peaches that we serve them in lunch, and they don't correlate it. So I brought in a bunch of examples of sweet potatoes, and pineapple, you know, whole, and celery stalks, and I kinda played a game with them, and asked them what it was, and how it was grown, and if you could eat it, you know, the whole thing. And then I showed them what they actually get in the cafeteria. I brought in sweet potato, a sweet potato, and then, you know, I showed them the sweet potato french fries that we had yesterday in the class, and they're like, "That's what that was?" And I was like, "Yes, see?" So now they're hopefully trying more of those things. I also kinda correlated it with, you know, this, a carrot helps your eyes, or this fruit vegetable, you know, keeps your bones strong. So it was relatable to them as a K through first graders as I could. I'm doing one in December there also, where I hope to plan on talking about balanced meals, and you know, what they should be taking at lunch, or at dinner, or, you know, in that Christmas meal that's coming up. So they're just not, you know, going right for those sweets, but more of a complete balanced meal. And I'm open for any school to come in and talk, and hoping just to do more and more as the year goes on, so.
Okay, the next part is pretty simple, I'm just gonna show you some pictures of what we've done so far this year. This is Kelly's showing what carrots look like, they actually have green tops on them, they're not just little baby little carrots like them. There's gonna be some shots of the high school, there's Christie making some pizzas from scratch. And then those items on the left, those are all types, grab-and-go items that we have hopped at the high school. These are the side dishes that we have featured at the high school on the left side. That's something that's really important to us, is that we don't just serve, like Kelly mentioned, canned peaches. We like to mix it up a little bit, and introduce the kids to something different than just a canned fruit, canned vegetable. We like to do composed salads. Kelly, what's the name of the corn salad?
Sweet corn salad or corn black?
Yeah, yeah, sweet corn salad. So, you know, we try to introduce the kids to a lot of different things, rather than just normal everyday stuff. Here's our bowls line, that would be the line that we try to serve kinda home-cooked style meals in a bowl, kinda like a KFC bowl. And then on the right is the pizza that the girls make on a daily basis. Here's a couple of our people at the high school, there's our sandwich line that's on the right side, that we make sandwiches on a daily basis, made-to-order. And that's it, we wanted to keep it quick, and I'd love to answer any questions that anybody has. Yes?
I've asked a couple of different things. On our athletic department, we're talking about nutrition, and of course, we know that it's very important for the athletes, girls and boys, to have lots of protein and energy. And so would you like work with coaches to help them on, let's say, the football team's diet, to help them build muscle, to teach them what would be the best thing to eat? 'Cause I know like on the wrestling team, half the time, they teach them not to eat and sweat out, you know, 50 pounds or whatever, but they need to know how to eat to keep their muscle mass, you know what I mean? So would you help them with that, if they ask for it?
Absolutely, absolutely. We have a regional dietitian that we can tap into, that if we need to, you know, if we need to look at some specific diets, some specific menus for athletes. But Kelly would, you know, easily be able to work with any coach, athletic director, anything like that.
Now, this is another, just off topic, would the cafeteria be able to create something like an energy drink for somebody that was in sports or something, that they could have before, you know, before practice or whatever, so they wouldn't get sick, but they needed to have a little bit of energy? Can you do that, too?
I don't know about doing that, we would be able to provide anything that's already, you know, they've already got prepackaged.
Just curious, I mean, I didn't know.
We're close, so we're not that good.
There's new regulations coming out that we can provide snacks to the athletic, it's not final yet. When I talked to my state representative last week about it, they were talking about being able to provide snacks for free to athletic groups, you know, before they practice and stuff. But again, it's in the works, it's not 100%.
Yeah, and providing snacks for free, that would be reimbursed by the federal government.
And I didn't necessarily mean for free, but, you know, just to teach them something that they could have before they went to practice, or whatever that they would need.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I know when I looked at your website, Chartwell's website, they have a lot of healthy information like that, and even some special recipes, so that's probably something that we should try to promote, you know, more to our parents, to know that that's an option out there.
I believe, Kelly, you worked with, did you work with technology to get that, all of those links on the Beach Grove website?
Yeah, I know we work with them, we get things out there, so they should be up there.
We'll double-check that, though, and make sure we make that answer. Any other questions?
Just thank you very much. We love the pre-board meeting food, since I think everybody comes from immediate work to get here.
The catering has been fantastic.
Well, just, yeah, just the quality of the look for the open house.
Oh, yeah.
I was told there, and you know, this is, it looks great.
That's Kelly and our chef, Paul, that actually works at Pike, he came over to help do that, and some of those special functions we can draw from other school districts, you know, to help us if it's something that, you know, Kelly might have on her end of the list.
I appreciate that as a resource for your organization, you have a lot of connections, a lot of resources you can pull from. I think I even overheard that part of the display isn't owned by us, which is borrowed for tonight.
Yeah, we do that quite a bit, actually.
Yeah. That kind of collaborative environment is great, so our school system is, I appreciate.
That's good, yeah, that's a good thing to mention, like Warren and Pike, on, you know, east and west side of the city, where they have, they're large districts, and they have lots of stuff that we can beg, borrow, and we make sure we get it back to them right away, but, you know, that's just a good opportunity for us to bring that here to Beach Grove.
Just, I know that a day at Pike recommended you guys a few years ago, and so I think it's been a happy marriage, and I do have a confession, I think I had more brownies, cookies, and whatever, so I probably need some lessons from Kelly on proper nutrition, 'cause I was not a good role model, I had cheese and brownies, and chocolate chip cookies, so. I had a couple pieces of sausage, if you've been at Scottsdale.
Maybe some fiber.
We really truly appreciate it, I mean, my daughter's a student here, and, you know, I know coming from where she was before, it's a different, and much more appetizing meal for her on a daily basis. She used to bring her lunch every day, and she's no longer doing that, so I know that the Kaiser household is essentially happy and making it happen.
A little forward, too, probably.
Yes, it's okay.
Well, and I know, too, you know, special thanks to Beth and Kelly, their office is right next to mine, and, you know, they're constantly working hard.
You're trying to leave them for a while?
No, yeah, free samples, please. So I just appreciate their hard work, too.
Thank you very much, your honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're gonna go back to our original agenda, so curriculum, David, we've been talking.
I talked to you several times about the A through F process, and how complicated it was, and we had to make sure the state released the information, well, it's been released now, so I wanted to give you an update of what it looks like, and kind of what it means. So what I've given to you is, we have really two different processes going on here. One is the elementary to middle school, which is the I-step information, 'cause they can get growth looking at I-step scores. And then we have the high school, which has this ECA information. I think I went through it with you, and it's extremely complicated, but let me, let's look at it. First little chart here is the I-step chart, which would be the elementary grades and the middle school. You notice that up there in the corner, 1,276 students took our test, which is pretty much everybody. Then what they look, if you look in the first column, the 81.8% is what we scored as an average for the elementary and middle school of passing the test. If you look, this is English language arts, so if you look over in the math, the first column in the math chart, 85.8, is the percentage of students who passed the math in the elementary and middle school areas. They then look at growth, and in these various areas, we talked about growth, and they can take away points, or they can add points, back and forth. But if we're typical, you wouldn't get any points. You notice across the board, we were relatively typical in all categories, so no points were taken away from us, and we really didn't receive any extra points. So when they analyze all of this, it came out that the elementary division had a 3.0 in the English language arts, and a 3.5 in the math, which came out as a 3.25, which is a B for the elementary and middle school division. Participation, we had to have at least 95, or some of the kids took, they had 99.8, which is a good participation rate. Now, the one below there is the high school. Remember, at the high school, you had to have two tests in order to measure growth. So the last time they really took the test was in eighth grade, so they picked the eighth grade scores, and then they compared it to the ninth grade algebra, and the 10th grade English, and they're really looking at the 10th grade score compared to the eighth grade scores. Again, they can add points and take away points. What happens is between the eighth grade and the 10th grade, especially in the math, they took the I-step in math, and they're comparing that to the algebra test, so there's really no comparison. So what you can see is our scores dropped, so they had a minus .5 taken away from us. But once the kids get to that 10th grade, we keep going with them, until they finally pass the test. So they gave us plus points, because we really get those kids to pass the test, so they can graduate. So it kinda balances out, between eighth grade and 10th grade, they drop a little bit. Again, when you say schools, there's a drop, too, so there's all kinds of reasons it might drop, but we just keep on the kids until they pass it, so it kinda balances out. Again, an 81.2 was the average for the math in the first column, and then the 78.2 in the middle school. Of all the programs, probably our lowest score was the 78.2, and it was the English language arts at the high school level. But you take all these, and you notice they've got weights on them, too. Another interesting thing is, if you look at the college dual readiness, which is that last column, we got an A in that, that's our AP classes, our dual credit classes, and all that type of thing. That's really great. What's going to happen is, that last column, which we have an A in, is going to increase every year, and test scores are gonna decrease, so they're putting more and more emphasis on college readiness, which is our strong point. So I think that's kind of good to our, what's gonna be happening in the future. You notice that they did the weights, and that program got a 3.10, which was a B. So our elementary to middle school program got a B, and our high school got a B. Now I go back and compare it to the rest of the county, and see what, 'cause our corporation, when they see the overall grade at the top, that's what our corporation got, which was a B. When I compared it to the 11 school districts in Marion County, again, we were third in the county as far as the A through F scores. And that's taking each school, and doing all my divisions, and that type of thing. I felt pretty comfortable with a third out of 11.
Was it Speedway, Franklin?
No, do they do their, do they get their scores the same way once it gets back to the corporation?
They get the same way, we do, yeah. I think I told you my reasoning, and one is that Speedway, because they have a lot of industry, they have a lot, and their class sizes are very small, they have one more school than we do, and they're smaller.
15 kids per class.
They have one more school than we have, less kids. So see, money will help. Because it gets a lower class size, lower class size, means you can do more individual, and we can only afford what we can afford. The other one is Franklin, Franklin has the highest social economic in the county. Less kids are on Franklin. So it is a higher social economic. As I told you, the number one indicator of how well they're gonna do the test is how wealthy their parents are. It's the way it is.
Do you know the percentages of free and reduced for both those schools?
I can look it up.
I'm just curious.
But with our demographics, and I wrote that one, Wendy, with our demographics, we are, we shouldn't be down here, we're up here.
It's kind of interesting to piggyback off that, we've got a meeting here tomorrow morning with United Way, and they wanna give a million dollar grant, million and a half maybe, to schools in the Marion County area. I got an email today, and said, "Central and Hornet Park don't qualify, because we're cheating too high." So, yeah, because...
Except they wanna give it to a very talented.
They're looking at schools in Marion County, but because our test scores are so high at those schools, we don't qualify for the grant. And I thought, this kind of chub, says, "Oh my gosh, so we've worked hard, we do a lot of stuff with an eight-step process, so therefore, we don't get applied for grant to take our 13 or 14%," Craig, I think, didn't ask someone in that area, or, you know, so we're not gonna go, and so tomorrow, we have the meeting, since I'm leading the meeting, I'm gonna express my concern over it. I thought that was kind of interesting. I thought that was kind of interesting, because we do well, we're not gonna apply for the grant. The second thing, just so everybody understands this, if you think the letter grades are gonna go away, I would be shocked if they are. Just because we have a state superintendent, these letter grades have been approved by the Board of Education of the State of Indiana, and they are supported by a lot of people. Now, do they need to be tweaked? Absolutely. You know, the whole growth thing, we're not sure that's really the fairest, because if you, if you have, it's broken into four quadrants, the low 25, the upper 25, and the middle 225s. So if we have our, our kids out of the top quartile, and let's say they're at 93%, if they don't grow, we're penalized. And there's just something that doesn't seem to make sense about that. So they're at, they're at individual students at an A level on, on I-step, they're in the 9th percentile, but yet, if they don't go from the 95th to the 97th, it penalizes and hurts our scores. So there's some things with the, the A to F that need to be tweaked. I think there needs to be an at-risk factor. You know, I think they need to work into these, your, your socioeconomic status, because the research is really clear on that. We're, I've said this before, we are one school district that blows that research out the window. You know, Craig's building's at 70%, and we scored an A. You know, Tanya's building, same thing, they're into 70%, they score in there. We had some great test scores coming back on NWA from looking at growth, so we do a great job, and, you know, I, I, not to put pressure on the principals, we are striving for As, but under this system, which is not the best system, a B is darn right pretty good. And it goes back to the efforts of our teachers and our administrators, so my hat's off to you guys.
Let me point something else out, because this just drove me up the wall. If you try to add these things up, they don't add up right. Try to add the rows, they just don't add up. Finally came, I finally figured out what was going on. So if you look at that one column, the bottom 25%, that's not the bottom 25% of our students, it's the bottom 25% of the students in Indiana. We may not have kids who fall within that bottom 25% of Indiana, just like the top 75%. It's not the set top 75% of Beach Grove's kids, it's the 75% of Indiana, and we, which students fall in there. So when you add those rows up, they don't add up, and we probably have some kids who are not in the top 75% of Indiana, and not in the bottom 25% of Indiana, and they're just not in. So that's why those, you know, that really drove me, and why does these columns or these rows don't add up right? And that is why. And then, we have no control over, because we don't know which kids' scores were in the state of Indiana, so we pretty much have to take a lot of this information around the state as at base value.
And just to piggyback off in very simplistic terms, our test scores are determined by how are the kids in the state do. You know, it, this is, this is a norm reference testing philosophy, so if you think about the old curve, you know, when that, that top football player in your class, you know, that, that person's lowest score was the curve, you ever hear those stories, you know, because, let's say Rich Curvin, as a football player, whatever his score was, that was kind of a cutoff. That's how this is done, is based on a curve, where it should be criterion reference when it's based on, if you're at 80%, you're from a 90%, you should be an A. And when you start playing with growth, there's so many factors that really throw the whole thing out of filter.
It takes your top students, who are scoring way up there, and takes half of them with low growth, saying you're penalized because your very top great students are, are not in, in the bottom half of that growth. So it does, it forces good, good top-notch kids to say they have low growth. It forces, which, that's criticism of the state. The other thing I want to point out to you, is with the balanced calendar, and we really talked about what we could do during those two weeks, especially the one week, and of course, I want to show you what the high school did, because we haven't had this fall period where the kids could come back. We did let them come back at Christmas, and we did let them come back at the end of the year, now we've got extra times. So during the fall, we had 129 students who took advantage of coming back during that one week and working to get their grades up. 113 of those were able to do it. These are all the courses that we have offered. Some of it's through computers, some of it's, we did, we did have teachers in the four, four areas, the four core areas, who would help them, too. And then down here, you can see all the different, 113 credits were, and that gives you an idea how much, three hours and 25 minutes, they're taking various times to catch up and to go from an F to a D to try to pass the course. I thought that was kind of interesting to mention. Of course, we have, at the other buildings, we have the Buzz Club.
Actually, my report, so that's perfect, that's great, typical.
How about TAP? Did you want to talk about TAP a little bit?
Okay, I can give you an update, which is kind of neat. TAP takes this growth as part of their formula to give value-added incentives to the teachers. We, I think I told you this, we were about the only school district in the state, and I think it might be because of the way we're structured, that the K through three principals were not comfortable taking fourth grade scores, especially a kindergarten. So we made a, a deal, pretty much, with TAP, saying, would you use NWA scores? Because we give, you need, you need two tests. TAP said, yes, we'll take it, but you have to be able to compare your results with other districts, because you could get good growth, but you're not getting the amount of growth you should be getting. You've got to be, have a comparison group. Well, there's no schools in the state of Indiana who really weren't interested in doing this. So, but we knew that South Carolina was using NWA. So TAP made a special agreement that we would compare Beach Grove's scores with the state of South Carolina. So all of this had to be done, and then we hired SAS to do the, because they do South Carolina's, to figure out all the data and all that. Last week, I got from General Rus, the head of the TAP program here, saying, when, you know, I've turned the data in, when you need it, so we need it on Wednesday. And SAS gave me the data on Tuesday, and I emailed it to Verb Tuesday morning, and we have been informed that our two elementary schools got the top growth they could possibly get, which was a five, from NWA data. So we're the only school district in the state of Indiana was able to do that, so.
Now, the school that they compare us to, are, are they pretty much in the same, like, economically, everything with us?
That's why, that's why SAS has to do the, because they have to take all those factors into consideration.
Okay.
We just couldn't do it ourselves, and the state of Indiana couldn't do it either.
Sure.
So...
That's awesome.
Yeah, we were very, very pleased, and, see, a part of, of the TAP model is that you get a score for the whole school district, and people who don't have kids get that score. Now, they also have scores for each of the teachers, too, so that would be another part of the, of the formula, too. So I was real pleased, and I think that, you know, we didn't, we just did it, because they insisted on it, that it worked out the way that it did.
That's awesome.
So, and I went to the cell conference today, I'll go tomorrow, and Patty Turlock is on the panel, she's our master teacher from Central, so she's representing us, and TAP's one of the groups sessions that you can do. And then we just got word that Erin was picked for something. Erin, you want to tell us what that's all about?
Sure, in February, the TAP, the TAP has like administrator training days, so there's one February 1st coming up, and they picked a few principals to come and speak about the TAP leadership team meetings that we facilitate once a week, and so I was privileged, they asked me if I could come and serve on a panel to kind of answer questions and, and share what's working at Hornet Park, so, yeah, it's exciting.
And if I could add to that, I believe Tom is gonna be going to the principals conference...
Uh, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
To sit on a panel to talk about evaluation, and how it's affecting my school, the evaluation system.
Then the state TAP sent out a message to all the TAP schools, saying that certain schools had central office people who passed the test to evaluate, and that they could go to TLT, or they could do evaluations, and would, they would suggest other schools might be interested in, and we were the district that we, Laura and I both are qualified evaluators, so that's kind of nice, we were ahead of the curve.
And just, I want to think, the important thing, that when Tom's involved, and these two are involved, they actually evaluated these guys, you know, principals, running their TAP, their teacher, their, their TAP leadership team meetings, and it's along with Mary's story, it's a very specific, very almost scientific way of doing this. It's just like, oh, you're doing a good job. And, and the checks and balances of the TAP are tremendous across the board, and it's made, it's made a huge impact, we think, in the instruction, and not to put pressure on, but I, I'm really confident our test scores issue will be even stronger. I, I really believe that. And as they look at me and roll their eyes and say, thanks, Dr. Kaiser, but, you know, I, I don't know about test scores, but I know the instruction and the teaching and learning is definitely stronger, I hear from the teachers. So, and I appreciate kids bringing this forward, Laura, Tom, everything you guys do at the district level, and our, and our principals, it's another great thing that we do to benefit our kids.
I really only have a, a couple of things, just wanted to update you on the race to the top of district competition grants. We sort of told you a little bit about that in our last meeting, and the fact that we were intending to apply. The deadline was right before the fall intercession, and we got all 170 pages into Washington, DC. We are very excited about the potential for that grant, and that was the big one that we asked for, about $10 million, so we are keeping our fingers crossed for sure, we will know by December 31st about that award. Like Kit has had mentioned about the intercession, I just put a little piece in your update about some of the activities that were happening in addition to the work at the high school. So we had remediation happening K through eight, our K through sixth graders, that took place at Central, and the seventh and eighth grader stayed at the middle school, so we had Buzz Club happening there for remediation. We also had several groups of teachers step up to do some more enrichment opportunities, where we had a baseball camp going, Mr. Bradford had a very cool walking around Indiana Trails opportunity, there was a, a very well-attended opportunity at the middle school where the students studied the Holocaust, and then ultimately took a field trip to the Candles Museum in Terre Haute. We had a group of students at the high school visit Vincennes for a college tour one day, and again, we had all the other things that were happening there with Buzz Club. We also had the YMCA running for families that needed sort of other opportunities for, for childcare during that time. A lot of people chipped in to help make that week happen, and I think that we had a lot of safe and happy students during that time, in addition to well-fed, because as you heard earlier, Chartwell was able to provide wonderfully nutritious opportunities for the kids, and that's the first time that we've done that, so that was great. We are very excited about another grant that has been put forth by the State Department, this is Indiana Department of Education, an innovation grant, we have applied for this grant before. The innovation grant is in the same sort of pot of money as the classroom innovation grants that we have successfully been awarded the last couple of years, so we're in the process right now of looking at drafting that. It's, it's due here in, in about a month, and we're really looking at college and careers kind of our focus for that grant opportunity. So this is another one that we could really see some nice funding and some innovative sort of programming as a result. So keeping busy with our grants, just trying to get as much extra money as possible, so that we can continue with really neat opportunities for the boys and girls.
What size is the grant?
That one, you can ask for up to $500,000. We're not quite sure that we will do that, we're, we're trying to be really sort of laser-focused in our, on our application this time, so it might not be that we're asking for sort of the, the amount that you're allowed to ask for, but we're gonna try to be strategic in, in what we're looking to fund, and we're still kind of in the planning stages for that, but I think we talked around about 300, 350,000, just passing out numbers.
Or a degree.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want to be too greedy, we want to, we want to ask for what we need. Good stuff, thanks.
Ms. Stevens.
Thank you, Ms. King. Lots of great things still continue to happen there at Beach Grove City Schools, and there's always so much going on that it's even hard to cover everything that occurs, because there's so many great things going on. You guys all got your Beach Grove City Schools newsletter for the fall, actually went out a little bit early, so I was real pleased with that, and that was pretty much just catch up on the first nine weeks and let everybody know what was going on. And then also, of course, we continue in our quest to recruit out-of-district students with that newsletter, it went out to those zip codes that our back-to-school newsletter went, because we encourage good students to try out Beach Grove City Schools and see all the wonderful things that we have to offer. I told you about Walmart last month, and another nice thing that they're doing for us is they're putting a photo book together for all the schools where they took all those wonderful gift cards, and one for the district for Dr. Kaiser, and so hopefully that'll be ready soon to look at all of those great shots. I attended, during fall break, I attended a day of the FFA convention, and that was really wonderful, I actually, it was great. Did you go, Janice?
I get to go because of the marketing department, everything.
It was fabulous. I mean, it got me so much more excited about the opportunities that our kids get through the FFA organization. And I kind of focused in on the career fair and all those kind of things, and I talked to a lot of university reps while I was there, it was just, just an eye-opening experience. So we're really lucky that we have that FFA organization here and the opportunities. Several of our FFA members here at the high school participated in the rally to fight hunger, and there should hopefully be a story coming up this week on that with their photo, but they actually were in the, in all the other groups with FFA to package over 1 million meals. And they did that, got some really cute pictures of them in their food service hats, you know, but you can see the Beach Grove FFA jacket, and half of those meals went to Indianapolis area to those in need, and the other half went to Haiti. So it was a really neat experience, and I'd like to, if you'll bear with me, I'd like to mention those names that participated, Ashley Williams, Michaela Ward, Abi Strala, Kealan Smith, Veronica Rubadu, who was our high school student of the month today, Allison Merritt, Megan McCormick, Ethan Martin, Hannah Loughlin, Stephanie Ingram, Emily Head, Rebecca Goodman, Evelyn Dodds, Carolyn Cathcart, and Derek Cardy. They all participated in filling those meals, so it was a, it was a good experience for them. Last but not least, for community relations, there's lots of people I have to thank for tonight for the Science Academy opening, first of all, you as a school board for all your support and for being there, and Janice for cutting the ribbon tonight, it was a hard toss. I know it was, but I appreciate it. Dr. Kaiser, Mr. Bradford, the choir, FFA members, Mr. Kaufman, Kelly for the food, Mr. Banks and his students, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Wagner and I spent some days this week when I said, okay, where can we get a podium that we can, we won't have to move this one out? So there's all kind of things, there's lots of people that go into an event like this, and I just thank everybody, and if I left out your name, I'm sorry, but it was, it was a really great event, I think, and our community attending and some real interest, so I think that was great. For the Beach Grove Education Foundation, I, last week, attended the INEPED conference on Thursday, November 8th, and it was Building a Foundation for the Future of Our Students was the theme. So I attended sessions on fundraising, social media, board development, alumni associations, and then we all, I also was in part of the Infused Project, of which Beach Grove Education Foundation was a recipient. So it was a good time, it's been a great few weeks, and a great last month, and only the best, only Beach Grove. Thanks you.
We need to approve some minutes for our October 9th regular session meeting, can I get a motion for that?
Well, we can do it for a minute.
Yeah?
Second.
Judy, Judy, all, all favor?
Hi.
Obed? Okay, and then we need to approve the claims, does anybody have any comments about the claims before we approve them?
I do have one comment, and that is, thank you for them finally being upright so we can read it.
Yes!
That was very helpful, and on that note, I will... And on that note, I will approve. I will move.
Did you have a question?
I have. Check number 5502 for the clerk of the, of Hendricks County for $321 and 1 cent. What was that for?
I have no idea.
We'll have to find out.
Sometimes you have to ask that before the meeting so they clarify because they have to go back and look it up, but they will. Do you want us to approve these until you find out what's going on?
I'm just curious, what we're paying in Hendricks County?
More than likely it's child support, donation, pay checks.
That's right. Yeah, we collect those. Thank you, Rob.
And sometimes there's also expenditures to other school corporations and organizations when we have a child who's placed in a, um, alter, alternate placement. Sometimes we have to pay part of our dollars to educate others. And so routinely, see Lawrence Township, Wayne Township, and some Johnson County Special Services for placements like that as well.
And check 5513 to amazon.com. It says, "See description," and there was no description for $67.42.
Price of technology most likely, we'll have to find out. Let you know.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
What you're supposed to do is that? Do you want to, will those take your money?
We really need to. We need to pay them.
Okay. So, we need a motion to approve the claims?
Crew is.
And who would like to say something?
Sweet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Dr. Kealan, we have need business updates.
Yes, I, uh, I tried to go into some detail in each of the paragraphs so that you could kind of understand, um, and explain, I put dollars also in every one of those paragraphs to explain. So, first item of business in the personnel or in the business report is the request for a opening of a hearing for an additional appropriation. And that is a permission to spend dollars that we do have on hand. So, if we could have a motion to start that and then I'll explain it.
Okay. So, we need a motion to, uh, for the additional appropriation hearing.
I will.
Judy?
Yes.
Second?
I'll second it.
Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Many times when we do the budget, it starts, the process starts in June of the previous year. And then we have approval, explanation in August, September, and then I meet with the DLGF in October, November, December. And during those times, we are unsure of the actual dollars that we're going to receive because many times our dollars are pending due to counts such as student counts in the fall, counts of special education and categorization of those, as well as miscellaneous revenue. I talked to the DLGF and I told him I thought that we would be spending 18 and 1/2 or 19 million. He assured me, no, I think you'll only be, revenue will be about 16 million. And I said, no, I'm pretty sure that our revenue is going to be 19 and 1/2 million. And he said, no, I think it'll be about 16 and 1/2. And I said, well, okay. So, now the year's gone by and I waited till the very last moment to make sure that we're receiving the dollars exactly on par. And so we are going to need to expend 19 million dollars as, uh, but he could not guarantee that. And so, uh, many times they'll give you a permission to spend at a certain dollar. And so we are receiving the dollars and I am showing the Department of Local Government Finance that we are on par to finish out those, um, receipts. So, uh, to have normal personnel costs, we've been on par for the whole year. Um, we do have an additional $3 million in the general fund that is in process of being spent, um, in the next three payrolls. And rainy day, 403,000. I want to make sure that, and I'm not saying that we're going to spend all of the rainy day at the end of the year by any means. However, in the month of December, there are debt service and mortgage payments at the Bank of New York Mellon. If I need to pay a bill, it's a mortgage bill, I need to pay. And so I just kind of need permission to spend and since there's dollars there, I'm asking for that permission to spend. They also gave us $0 to spend in bus replacement and I have some cash in there, 15,000 as well. And so, um, there are some bus tires and some parks that I wanted to spend those dollars on. And so, that's the explanation of the additional appropriations that I'm requesting this time. It's a very specific process that I go through with the DLGF after approval. And then I have an item, the document certified, and then I send all that documentation, uh, to the Department of Local Government Finance, uh, for their approval.
I know I ask you this every year and I'll probably ask you this every year when we're on. But if we have money left in the budget at the end of the year, do we need to carry it over or do we lose it?
We keep the cash. Absolutely. It's a great question. We keep the cash. However, in the budget process that I started back in June, July, August, September and had approval of, remember all those forms that I had approved, all those forms, there's a 16-line statement and it is a calculation that goes through from the beginning cash balance to the June 30th balance to the anticipated cash balance through my, my calculations of what I anticipate we'll spend. And so I anticipate we'll have, let's say, 200,000 left over in one of the funds. I add that to the new money that I'm going to get to seek appropriation. Let's say we get a new million dollars, we have 200 left over. Then that whole budget process tries to ask for permission to spend 1.2 million. Sometimes they give it to us, tonight's example, sometimes they do not.
Okay. Now, when we, if we have this surplus left over for the next year, does that affect the amount of money that we get in our budget the following year if we have surplus? Or does that, that's not a moot point? That's just our little personal?
That is one of the reasons why, the answer is yes. However, in a 16-line statement, I account for the possibility of having extra dollars and not wanting to spend those extra dollars, but still needing to raise revenue high enough that we maximize all the revenue we can possibly get. So, I put line one in my 16-line statement, "High." I put it "high." Remember I tell you, I try to shoot for the moon "high"? So, I estimate budgets "high" so that I justify trying to get all the tax dollars that are out there that are available for our school corporation. So, the answer is, yes, it's our own personal amount. We have discretion on whether or not to spend it. And yes, I shoot above that dollar to try to ensure all of our dollars are still coming in and we can keep our nest egg. Many times in the last three years, I have requested multiple times to move those extra dollars, though, over to rainy day. That's a much better way to shove the money into a savings account for a rainy day and then justify the raising of these dollars over here. And so, I don't know, it's, it's just a continuous work of art. It's just, it's a continuous work and inspection on a month-by-month basis. And what I do, and I've shared with you before, is I have a cash flow that I do every 10th of the month that we anticipate and looks at every month as it ends. Our cash balances receipts and I keep projecting forward a year or a year and a half. So, it's just a continuous action.
Rick, can you hear all this? Can you hear us talking?
I don't even think he can hear us.
Rick?
Yes?
Can you hear us?
I can barely hear you.
Yeah. See, I don't, you're not hearing any of the stuff we're talking about, are you?
Yeah, I can hear you talk perfectly.
Oh, you can? Okay. All right. Just want to make sure you're hearing everything.
I just can't hear you guys.
Okay. So, I guess that's why he's not.
Because the microphone is over laptop.
Yes.
Now, do you want us to, uh?
Yeah.
The hearing?
Correct.
I think before you close the interview, she's asking if anybody in the.
Absolutely. Are there any other questions and?
Does anybody have any questions?
Because I can explain the, each of the funds individually or any of the dollar numbers. Okay?
Could we get a motion to close this thing? Anybody else have any questions? Second?
Second.
Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, we need to talk about additional appropriation resolution. You want to talk about that first?
It's exactly, it's just in legalese explaining that I had received your granting permission, um, for me to ask the DLGF to spend the $3 million in general fund, 403,134 in rainy day, and 15,000 in the bus replacement fund during the calendar year 2012.
Okay. Could I get a motion to adopt additional appropriation resolution? Guys, there's only like one here.
I know, but are we going to get some new buses with that 15K?
A bus costs 150,000.
Okay. So, what are we getting for 15K out of bus replacement?
Uh, tires and parts.
Fair enough. Very, make a motion.
Here you go. Mike? Would you like to second?
I'll second it.
Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, how about, do you need to talk about the tax anticipation warrants?
Yeah, there's a very large legal document that was provided to you. Again, this is an annual event. Indiana Bond Bank provides us an opportunity to get something called a tax anticipation warrant. Those warrants have not been sized yet. They will be based on the anticipated tax levy that we will receive in 2013. And so until, uh, our actuaries and our, our accountants determine what that dollar figure is, they've not finalized the amount. But it is not to exceed the 65%, I guess, 65% of the total levy to be received. And of course, as we always have and always will, we always pay it back in the same calendar year. So, anything we do borrow in January, just start paying our bills, January, February, March, and April, we will pay back by the end of December, that same current year. It is not a long-term loan. It is very short-term loan. Um, typically they're 1% or less, um, the last few years. And without that, we can't pay some of the mortgage and debt service payments that are due, January 10th, 15th. Um, March, we have some bills due, and then in June, because we only get our taxes, once taxes are assessed, bills go out, get your taxes, I only receipt the revenue we made. So, this is a tax anticipation warrant. Um, and so there's a lot of paperwork that has to do with this, which is really a good thing because it's, it's legal counsel and bond counsel and a lot of really smart people guarantee in that we're doing the right thing through legal steps.
Could, um, could you give us a dollar figure, what you think of that 1% or less? Guesstimate, not holding you to it.
I think, I think the anticipated warrants, we will receive only in three funds because that's all I think that we can request.
Okay.
And that's all I've done, is debt service, pension debt service, uh, bond fund, and the, um.
Capital products?
No, I, I did the.
Oh, I have capital.
I did our referendum fund. So, those three funds. So, I anticipate on a referendum fund, 65% of 1.3 million, I think we'll get $700,000 netted to us.
Okay.
I think that in debt service, we will be approved of a levy of 3 point, um, $7 million, I think we'll net 2.4, which will help us the first six months to pay our bills.
Okay.
And in pension debt service, I think we will get a levy of about $481,000 and so we'll net about 200-ish, 250,000.
Okay.
And again, each of those, I have to pay half of that. Pension's really important because I owe that January. So, I have a quarter million that'll come due there. 1% of $4 million, we'll pay out 40,000 bucks.
And I want to add, the reason we have to do, and this is pretty typical for school districts in today's educational scenario, you know, because of the property tax, uh, circuit breaker losses, because of all these changes, a large percentage of districts are having to do this because we, you know, we don't have the cash balance. And it's mainly the, the debt service. I mean, we don't have it to pay when it comes due in January because we don't get the taxes till June 30th. And we'll get some even in May. So, unfortunately, at least probably my next 10 years, this is just a normal occurrence that we have to do. And, and, uh, you know, we would love to have cash balances not to do this, but quite frankly, with, uh, the new laws that the current governor and legislators have done, uh, there's many schools that are doing this, uh, you know, and, uh, it's only going to get more challenging, uh, to say the least on the tax levy side of things. So, uh, we don't want people to think we, we've not managed it well. This is the reality of doing business in the school world right now. You know, we, because we don't get the taxes until June and our cash balances aren't large enough, it, it is what we have to do. General fund, we're, we're doing pretty good, but it's the other taxable funds that create this scenario. So, uh, unfortunately, this will be an annual occurrence for us. Yes, we've done it before. Say, we've done it every year since I've been here.
Who will make a motion to approve the tax anticipation warrant?
I will.
Second?
Judy?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, and then you want to talk about the transfer of mail warrants?
Yeah, about a year, a year and four months ago, we had 1.5 million dollars that we didn't anticipate or need to spend at that time. And so rates weren't really good in the savings account, and rates were worse to keep them in our own personal bank account because of the FDIC fees, because of the industry, banking industry at this time. Well, the pendulum has swung to where we don't have as much money, as I've mentioned in the last two scenarios, on the cash balance currently, to warrant keeping money in a savings account and invest it. So all I want to do is take our investments and bring them back into our normal bank account fifth third. So I want to bring our money back out of Huntington to end the year, to guarantee and ensure that at the end of the year, we have cash balances, making payroll and all of that. Because really, we're not making hardly any money in the investment anyway. And now that the cash balances have gone down, we're not hurting as bad with FDIC fees. So it's just kind of a pendulum swing. We're just receiving what money we have back in.
Will you make any money off this money?
Yeah, out of the million dollar, million one hundred dollars, see the $4,013.64? That's how much we made. Out of a million, 1.1 million dollars, we made $4,000 over a year and a half.
So will we not have the account at Huntington right now?
Yeah, they're going to keep it open with zero in it. They assured me of that. They don't, they're fine with it. They're not going to close the account on us. In case we want to put our investment just back in, it's an easy, it's electronic transfer of funds. And I just didn't feel comfortable shifting dollars in the 1.1 million range without, you know, without informing you, being open and telling you, this is what I'm doing with those dollars.
So where are you shifting it back to?
Back to the pension debt service fund. We have a pension fund and a rainy day fund, and those will populate those dollars again.
And we don't make anything off that, but it's not worth it currently, as we're talking.
Correct. Yeah, we're just bringing, bringing our money back home.
And again, we're not planning on spending it. We're just kind of switching it back to the...
Right. We're just bringing the money back home.
Anybody have any questions about that? Would like to make a motion for that, to transfer the funds?
Make a motion, transfer the funds?
I'll second. Beth, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
As you know, we have the Hornet Enrichment Academy, and we do have an ongoing lease with them that we agreed to for three years that you approved, and it has been signed, sealed, and delivered. They do have an opportunity for us to pay that online, and we've not really done that before as a bill pay option. And since they did give us, provide us paperwork for that, we know we owe that, and I want that to happen in a timely fashion. I'm just requesting that we go into an automation of payment that creates an automation of that monthly mortgage or lease agreement that we have with the THARP, is it a THARP?
Yeah, it's THARP.
What is it?
Yeah, THARP.
Yeah, THARP Investments or something?
Yeah.
And so it's an auto debit account, and we owe it, you know, we owe it, and this makes things simple and easier for the business office.
It's always the same, straight from the...
It's always the same, and they'll be not authorized to take any more than that exact dollar.
Okay, we will approve then monthly auto debit transaction. Second, please.
I'll second it.
Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then do we want to talk about this notice to Parks Department? I mean, apparently, we need your lease, the space from them, right?
Bob, you're more school, I've read it, and you know all the details since you were involved in the very beginning. Do you want to give just a brief history and then take us to the present?
At the time that the school was looking to build its kindergarten, primary school, it didn't have the real estate that it needed to put it in an appropriate place. So it partnered with the city to renovate or to build a building in which, as you know, the city's community center is, and the other part of it is the Hornet Park Primary School or kindergarten. And because we didn't own the land, we entered into a license agreement that was provided for a 20-year term, but with the ability of the school, if they so desired, to notify the Parks Department, the City of Beach Grove, that they would like another 20-year term. And the license agreement provides for up to four successive 20-year terms. The current term doesn't expire until sometime in August of 2015, but I know Dr. Kaiser didn't want that date to pass. So I've had discussions with Mayor Buckley and Craig Wiley, the city attorney, and they're, they're fine with us at this early date going ahead. And if the board desires voting to give them notice and authorizing Dr. Kaiser to give them formal notice that we want to renew it for successive 20-year term, that'll start in 2015 for another 20 years. There's no, there's no, there's no rent now.
And there was a, and again, the best system on the park, we did this, there was a great partnership where the city and the school came together, the community was renovated, the tennis courts were put in, and then the fields were, you know, the athletic field was kind of set up. So we've got a great working relationship with them. And I was asked about the agreement as I went through, and I saw this date, and I didn't want to, I didn't want to get too close to have to worry. So I figured the sooner we get it extended, the better, and I won't have to worry about the next one 20 years from now. And it just really mattered. It's kind of like let's shake hands and continue the great partnership we've had. And now we put it into the legal sense to renew. But there's no cost to us. But there was a great partnership back, you know, when everything was put together on this, and the school borrowed some money and did some things, and so here we are.
And I will add that the tennis courts and the soccer field are subject to separate leases, which is not a part of what you're being asked to approve tonight. The city desires to have some further discussions about the use of that particular property, which is subject to a separate agreement that has a similar, almost identical renewal process, but they do want to have some discussions with the school, and may ask us to hold off on that part of it. But they're two separate agreements. One's a license agreement, and the other's a lease and license agreement.
Aren't they just about the same thing?
Well, actually, strangely, a lease is a stronger interest in real estate than a license. But at the time, that's what was negotiated. And there was some federal funding that the city got for the community center at the time that the school embarked on building Hornet Park as well.
Anybody have any questions about this before we make a motion on it?
The, when is this supposed to be built?
It was already built.
Soccer field?
No, no, there's the practice.
Practice soccer field.
Not age, the competition.
North of the south of the tennis courts. That's where we practice girls soccer, right there. Right across from the entrance to Hornet Park. And what, as I understand, what took place, there was some matching funds and some other things that helped get the federal grants, so by the school board and somebody doing some things. Yeah, but it's already there.
But that practice field is the high school standard, correct?
Well, I will tell you this, there are no actually legal standards to high school soccer fields.
Thought that it was in here that they had to be made to...
It was, but I'm...
High school standard?
It is, but I'm just telling you, technically, there, I mean, I've seen soccer fields that are wider, longer. Now, because more new fields have been built, there are standards that are set up. You can play soccer on any size field, even in ISHA. But like I said, it was built, it was built to that level. We practice there. We don't play games here because we play it down in the pit because it's a little bit nicer, but if we needed to play games on that field, we could.
But this was all done back in 95? It started in 93, agreement was entered into in 95. I don't know when the tennis courts were actually built or rebuilt, but the Hornet Park was built in 95, completed in 95.
So Bob, here's a question I was, who actually owns the tennis courts? The city?
The city, Parks Department, yes, the city.
Because I hope you will call those to go play more lanes, not be on.
We, we have a, we have a long-term lease, but we are not the owner. But we have the obligation to take care of it, to ensure it. And in the way the lease is written, if, if we're not using it for school purposes, the city can use it for community recreational purposes. There's also a provision that says that we're not using our gyms for other purposes. We'll cooperate mutually to allow the city, the Parks Department, to use our gymnasiums and the high school.
We also, just so you know, we have an outside summer, the Tennis Association provides the lessons during the summer there. So if you do have kids that will learn tennis, I don't know if it's free, but it's...
It's Mary, you know, it's a Mary County Parks Department, actually, cooperation between athletic department. And then, and it's weekly, it's nice.
In addition, the YMCA is going to be using, I think Hornet Park this summer to run a summer program, and they want to use the tennis courts and our swimming pool. And we've got such a great relationship with them, and hopefully, we get the race to the top grant, we'll be teaming with YMCA to do something really neat in our early childhood centers. But again, just emphasize the partnership and the relationship with the city, and the school system has always been strong, and we know we're going to continue that as far as sharing our facilities.
So we're the ones carrying the insurance solely on those tennis courts?
Liability?
Tom, I assume so.
Liability, absolutely.
100%?
Absolutely.
So even though we don't use them, but not once out of the year, the city's, the city's not putting in any...
But we have the right to use them whenever we need them. It's a...
I think it's a perfect example. The city picks up our trash for free, they play for our crossing guards.
They provide the police officers who...
Well, they, you know, we really, those type things, we've never really worried about who's on first and who's on second. I don't know of any schools in the...
I think it was considered a spirit of cooperation is a term I recall.
Yeah. And it's always, I know my five years, it's been that way.
It's much improved over the years.
And so we don't, you know, I said, we've even talked to the mayor about trying to share a mechanic at our transportation center to help defray costs and things like that. So we've even talked to the mayor about trying to put in a cooperative gas tank that would save both the city and the schools. So those type things, we've done.
Within the umbrella liability, you know, $2 million umbrella liability insurance, when you look at all the personnel activities, extracurricular, student engagement, everything that goes on, 365 days out of the year, the miniscule use and size of that property, if I had to divide down how much that dollar figure is, that would be a very small dollar amount for the overall insurance package.
Okay, so my question now is, if I go out and bust my melon on the ground out there, the school has to pick up the cost?
We have rules, regulations, gates, we follow all those kinds of things. And typically, a lot of people will use, will be, have their medical insurance replaced first. But if we were at an event and we weren't supervising it correctly, we absolutely would be responsible. But as far as slipping on, you know, if we, if we put salt down, or they slipped and fell, and we had salt and everything down, we haven't had a lot of playing time there.
No, I'm just saying, if I'm out playing tennis and I...
Maybe because the tennis courts are open for community use, say?
Yeah, I mean, they're open 24/7, basically.
Yeah, I think, you know, for us to be liable for something, they're going to show we were negligent. If you were out there, you slipped, you know, and got hurt, we wouldn't necessarily be liable. They could sue us, but they can sue for anything. And so it's really going to come down to the level of negligence. I mean, even if there's water on it, you know, and they're playing on it, they'd have a tough time gaining a claim for us. Now, if there were cracks in it that we weren't taking care of, then we're going to become liable. They could sue us.
And it's not like a swimming pool that's attracting nuisance.
Yeah. But you're right, yeah, they could sue us. They really could. And our insurance company will defend us for free and hopefully win the case and go from there.
And that's what's nice about our audit process that we do annually. They tell us when we're at a greater risk, and we put up signs. They tell us when we're at a greater risk, and we lock gates at certain hours. They tell us when we're at a greater risk, and we put extended lighting or lighting at certain times. So we have a nice audit process that tries to avoid the potential for somebody setting, you know, kind of setting us up for liability.
Yeah, but unfortunately, there's no way we can get away from that. We happen to carry the insurance because it's our, it's our scope of things. So Tom's right, it's quite, if we were trying to break down, it would be a minor school. Trying to get, even asking the city to pay for that probably wouldn't be worth the operational time and term of what it is. Good questions, though. I learned a lot by reading through this lease agreement, probably about the third or fourth time. And that's why I asked the question. I said, now, who actually owns it? I thought it was the city, but I just wanted to make sure.
Any more questions? Then are we free to make a motion that the, that we agree to renewing this with the Department of Parks and Recreation and also allowing Dr. Kaiser to authorize to provide Beth Berg with notice of the school corporation's desire to stay for another 20-year term? You have to do two in one.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Nancy, and who would second both of those together? Second, Judy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we need to talk about the bylaws for Central Nine.
Yes, Beth is the expert on these, and she proposed those. But we sent you the multiple pages of the C9 bylaws, and most, there's really no substantive change to those bylaws. All it really was, was changing terminology from vocational to other areas, really updating to the 21st century terminology, and really just clarification. And again, the timing of this is pretty critical because Beth and their board need to have this approved by December as we move into the new year. But again, there's nothing substantial related to, it doesn't change any responsibility, doesn't change anything. It's just kind of a house cleaning of language. But I will attempt to answer any questions that you might have, though.
It didn't change any financial obligations?
No, it did not. And just so you know, you know, for example, the building project at C9, you know, we have debt related to that, but it was prorated to our ADM. Same thing, we're talking about some really needed HVAC project at Grace Learning Center. And Perry Township, Franklin Decatur will be at larger percentage because of the size. Now, when it comes to the dollar amount, when we send a kid to C9, that's all the same. We all pay the same. But when it comes to the construction side of things, et cetera, that's always prorated based on the size.
Or 8%?
8%.
Would like to make a motion for the bylaws? Would like to second it?
I'll second it.
Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we have personnel, please.
Yeah, pretty small, a couple little, a couple of nominations. We hate to lose a couple of people here who've been a long time here in the corporation, but have moved on to doing some other things. And filled in an open special education assistant, an office aid position, and just some co-sponsors of high school restaurants, things like that. So not too much going on there. If I can answer any questions about individuals if you like.
Okay, who would like to make a motion to approve the employment recommendations? And then we approve the... Okay, who'd like to second it?
I'll second it.
Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We don't need to talk about the parks again, do we?
No, I do have an exciting operations report.
Okay.
Number nine in your Dropbox should be a 11-slide PowerPoint presentation of our intercession projects. And so I don't know if you were able to look at that, if not, you know, at your convenience. So what I thought I'd do is just make a few comments about the slides in the project. The, the first slide, it shows the Hornet Enrichment Academy, and we were able to install new carpet in that room, and that room is probably about the same size as this, this boardroom.
Isn't it, is it the same?
It's real similar, yeah.
Very similar?
And these are the carpet squares. And I was really proud to say our maintenance and grounds crew installed that in one day. So, you know, that was hard work, and it turns out great. So that was one of the projects. The second slide, we had several classrooms receiving the new furniture. And as you saw today, we were able to install all the furniture to the Science Academy, and that included the student desk, student chairs, teacher desk, and teacher chairs. So that was another project. The third slide, exterior lights were repaired and new bulbs were installed, making the parking lot safer and providing light for students who walk to school. The next slide, we were installed four flat-screen TVs. Three were installed in the Science Academy, and then one was installed in the remodeled family and consumer science classroom. The next slide, we installed the blinds in the Science Academy. The next slide, it's a classroom at Central, it had some water damage, and it affected some of the storage area there. We were able to repair the damage and then repair the storage cabinet and repaint the room. And you can see when you look at the slide, it looks brand new. So that was another project. The fence enclosure was installed around the dumpster at South Grove Intermediate School. If you haven't seen that yet, if you drive by now, that's all you see, and you don't see the ice ore of the dumpster. And so that turned out real well.
I thought the dumpster was against the school.
It used to be against the school. Now it's relocated on the north end of the parking lot, and it's next to the recycle bins.
That was recommended to us, right? They, I think the county, or the area health department, somebody had inspected that and told us that there were improvements necessary.
And we were, we were forced to put a fence up around it, no mistake.
And the reason we moved it out there was because of the parent pickup point. Those cars were right next to the dumpster, and they were getting the smell, and so this, this worked out a lot better. The next slide, damaged ceiling tiles, we replaced all of those throughout the corporation. So we just asked the maintenance and grounds guys, walk the buildings. If you see a tile that's been damaged or broken, this is a great time for us to hit all those. So we were able to do that. The grounds crew completed many of their jobs and continued their mowing, and also lining the different athletic fields. So that was another good thing to do over that intercession. The high school media center's carpet was clean, and it needed it, and it looks great now. This just shows sparkling floor in the wing of the high school, so we were able to do all that. So I guess maybe my point here is, the intercession is not only positive for students, parents, and staff, it's just a real good time for our maintenance to analyze our projects and then take those 10 days while no one's in the building, hit it hard and get it done. And every one of the buildings over those two-week periods had some major cleaning, and so that was really an effective way to get things done for our first intercession.
You know, that's one thing we talked about when we did the intercession, that probably wasn't one of our pluses for doing it, but as it turned out, it's a great opportunity because the summer is so short, even in the traditional summer, and you only have so many people that could do so much. It really, it sounds like it's been a positive impact. Lighting here has been changed and at other places throughout the district. They work 12 months out of the year, there's only so many buildings you can get into because of what's going on, so it helps a lot from that standpoint. So thanks, Phil, for all your, all your hard work.
Okay, it looks like we have several fundraisers that we need to make a motion to approve, and if I didn't miss any, the Ad Bed Bay has a fruit sale fundraiser... The Ed Bed Bay has a fruit sale fundraiser, and you can place orders online. The baseball team is doing a Beach Grove Athletic Shirt fundraiser. The cross-country team is doing a laundry sale fundraiser, which is kind of interesting. And the boys swim and dive team, they're wanting to do a fundraiser to do snow shoveling. I hope they're going to send out, like, brochures for that, because I'm sure lots of people might use that this year. And they're also going to give swim lessons as fundraiser. Did I miss any? Think I missed any?
About the, was it the baseball team that's going to do the...
Athletic shirts, the baseball shirts.
Have we done any discussion on that versus Spiritware? You know, there was kind of, there was somewhat of a controversy early in the school year when that took place, about how those...
Rob, do you want to talk about that, since you're more of an expert than I am?
The Spiritware program was never intended to get in the way of any fundraisers that any other groups wanted to.
Okay, thank you.
And just as a reminder, you can go on the website, and there's a form there if anybody would like to order an item, and...
Little things available yet, smaller sizes?
Absolutely.
They are?
Okay, I noticed that. It may not be shown, but they're available.
Okay, thank you.
So appreciate Robin and Brian's hard work on this, and you know, a lot of Beach Grove stuff.
Okay, so any questions about the fundraisers? So we need someone to make a motion to approve those proposed fundraisers, if you don't have any questions.
Make a motion to approve?
Mike, would like to second that, please.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now do we have any success stories? Anybody have anything they'd like to share?
I do kind of a couple, just general items. Tomorrow night, there's a science dinner at Cafeteria. That was an idea that Kevin Banks came up with. We sent 30 kids to Purdue's science camp, and we thought it'd be really neat to share that with parents. And we've got, Robin, 60...
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two people coming tomorrow night, you're invited. And it's kind of neat, Dr. Gagné from Purdue will be here, have a few things to say along with Kevin, and hopefully the kids will say a few things, but we really believe that that program is a vision changer. You know, those kids spending two weeks at Purdue, learning about science, and I know Rick is, Rick is in New Jersey, and we've got him on Skype, and Rick, we appreciate you being able to join us, and he's got a, he does some stuff that I don't understand, Bobby, technology and all kind of crazy stuff, but he's in New Jersey for two weeks. And by the way, the girls lost tonight, unfortunately.
Yeah, I know, I got the text.
And, but, so he's got him Skyped in, but his son went to Purdue camp for two weeks. Can you just kind of expand on how Ricky felt about that, thoughts?
Well, last year, he went for a week, and I guess, they have the opportunity to go for two weeks, is that correct?
Yes.
And he wants to do that again. I never thought in a million years that my son would ever be excited about doing anything for school, let alone going to a science camp for a couple of weeks, but the experience that he had, he talks about it, and he looks forward to going again in the summer. You know, I'm just really proud of that group, there's several young men and women in that group that I really see big things happening for them in the future. He elaborated on the labs, he had a great time in the labs, and even the discussion, the open discussions that they had, he said it was extremely eye-opening and got him excited about going to college, which, you know, that's our, that's our goal, to get these kids into secondary education and help them to be successful adults hopefully someday, so, yeah, he loved it.
Well, Rick, if I could expand on a conversation I had, I went up there for the final day to see the presentations, and I was talking to some Ricky, I said, well, what do you, you know, are you interested in science? He goes, well, I'm more interested in engineering. And obviously Purdue's a pretty good school for that, along with a few others, and I had the discussion with him, I said, do you realize that the area of medical technology has come hand-in-hand, and Dr. Hammick's husband, why don't you talk very quickly what he does and his experience, because it really ties into what I said about Rick, and I think it's important.
Well, besides being very cute, he is a graduate of Rose Holman Institute of Technology, and while he was at Rose, his degree is in mechanical engineering. He started in engineering, but ultimately has worked for Cook Medical the whole time, but sort of morphed from engineering to now he's kind of taking that application of engineering and is sort of developing medical products, and then ultimately working with physicians when they're kind of trying them out. So he's in Green Bay tonight, working with a doctor there, and just kind of cool how a mechanical engineering degree can kind of translate to what he's doing now. So many opportunities are out there.
And explain that to Rick's son, how, yes, you might be interested in engineering, but the medical side of engineering, you know, we don't know what we're going to prepare, what our kids are going to do, most of the jobs aren't there. And I know we sent 15, one two weeks, and 15 the next. Shannon, who's on the girls' basketball team, she is still doing a project with Dr. Gagné right now. And that was the small tissue room that we built on the advanced biology class. So I know that was a long story to tell you, but tomorrow night, again, as board members, if you're available, we'd love to have you come, and food services, providing dinner, and it's really just to celebrate with the parents what their kids have accomplished. The other idea I want to talk about is the 27th. We have a board meeting that night, and we purposely scheduled the open house, it's a work session. We purposely scheduled the Richmond Academy open house so we could combine those two together. So again, we're going to start over there and then come over here for a work session, but I figure since you're a captive audience that night, we get a chance to see a couple, at least one, maybe two graduates coming from the Richmond Academy, and those that haven't had a chance to get over there, really get to see what's exciting. I have a lot of fun taking my professional colleagues over there and showing them that. And I believe it's the 27th?
Tuesday.
Tuesday to 27th, and we purposely schedule accordingly, so. And if you can't be there, we'll take videos and let you, to be able to see that, but we're all excited about that, that grand opening of that program for our kids. And I had a discussion, I know I'm going on here, but I had a discussion today about Kelly. I asked Kelly, I said, Kelly, can we cohabitate with an ROTC program? You know, the issue about starting one is where do we put it? Well, we think we have space in that room to get something started. So I'm going to be going up to Ball State to talk to Officer Hitler, who runs the program there, about seeing what it takes to get started here. Ironically, our student of the month tonight, he said he was going to go in the Air Force, and I asked him, I said, well, how would you feel if we bought an ROTC program to be housed out at the Richmond Academy? He goes, that would be great. So I think that's just another post-secondary opportunity we have for our kids, and now that we found the space, I think we're going to try to see if we can kick that off here, maybe as early as next year, so that's all my things to do list. So the 27th, and then tomorrow night, so, thanks.
I move for your adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Adjourn.